Welcome, everybody. To start with, this meeting's recorded, so everyone be aware of that, that you'll be recorded. And we'll start with the first item is our approval of our previous minutes from February 22nd, 2024. You've had an opportunity to look at those. Any questions?
I'll second it.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Second one is, next on our agenda is what we're mostly here for is case 2024 dash P zero four, an application filed by Stephen Snyder on behalf of Culver Equities LLC for a site plan review of the Dunes major subdivision is commonly known as 1105 South Main and 957 South Main Culver. Who will start?
So do we have representation from Culver Equities today?
Yes, my name is Burke Chris, I'm in-house counsel for Culver Equities LLC. We've provided the site plan and documentation in terms of all of the engineering that's been laid out for the project presented to the town, I think submitted to the town's engineer, and we have our engineer here. Who's really willing, able to answer any questions that might come up. And we're open to hearing from the town's engineer on any questions or concerns or modifications that they may have seen from reviewing the plans.
Thank you. Since the invitation's been put forth, the town of Culver has retained the services of Midwestern Engineering. Scott Sipel is here today. Representation, do you mind commenting on what you've reviewed and some suggestions for the board here?
I'll start with sanitary. So our, we were contracted to look at sanitary water distribution and storm collection. So I'll start with sanitary. Essentially, the overall outlook will function. Most of our comments are related to the requirement to obtain an IDEM construction permit. The biggest thing is there's one pipe section that is, that needs to be modified to meet IAC 327. There's the pipe length that's over 400 feet on eight inch pipe. The requirement per state code is 400 feet. It's listed at 409 feet. And I think that can be rectified with a, a simple manhole shift to bring that, that, that distance down. The, the other thing, the other comments that I have are based upon experience that I've had with IDEM. And I think some things could be cleaned up to help that process get through a little quicker or with a little less comment from IDEM. And I can elaborate on those if you'd like, or I can, you know, we can go, we can go forward. Essentially, if you'd like for me to elaborate on them, I can.
Are they in number or are they pretty minimal?
It's kind of throughout. Okay. So it's not a, it changed this one and it's good, but it's kind of throughout.
Has, has Culver Equities received these comments prior to this?
So, um, yes.
Okay, then there probably is no need to enumerate them at this point. I have some in front of me as well. We can continue if you want to.
I did issue a letter to Bob Porter with Culver yesterday with some of these comments. I'm happy to forward that to to the developer if, if the town wishes. Moving on to the water system, there was a couple of comments that were listed on the plans. Our review letter, February 6th of this year. We questioned the purpose of a 10-inch tap on an existing 10-inch main from the town of Culver. Our comment was consider reducing if possible to an eight-inch tap. The tap was reduced to an eight, however, a qualifying mark note was added to the plan sheet that the reduction was done at our request and the town's request, and should subdivision see reduced pressures in the future, it would be the town of Culver's responsibility directed by that. That comment, in my opinion, I would recommend the town not take on that liability. Calculations for what was required for pressures and flow from the water system were requested, and I haven't seen them. If they were submitted, I haven't seen them. So if a 10-inch tap is warranted, then a 10-inch tap is warranted, however.
So we just need to see math behind the adjustment.
Yes, we'd like to know what's warranted. Tap because all, all lines in the subdivision are eight inch with six inch hydrants, which is what we would expect to see. The other issue is, is really a, it's more of a detail issue. The town typically does not require stores connections on their hydrants. There's a note to have the hydrants with stores connections. That's a minor point. I think that can be, that could be handled during construction. It's not, not something that the whole thing's out. See.
Well, there'll be some metals anyway, right?
Correct. Yeah. So the only thing that we are aware of is that those submittals may or may not be seen by the town until after they're installed. We're not aware that the town has a hand in submittals review.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, the water system appeared to be adequate from, from that standpoint. We just don't want to see the town take on liability that is kind of unfounded at this point. The storm section. So for starters, we have never officially issued any formal comments on storm, the storm plan. We've talked with Chris McCray, with John Kimpel and Associates about some of the things that were included. And what we received back, it doesn't appear that the calculations were changed. A few, there's a few things in the plans. There's no emergency routing for either we'll call it watershed within the property. So this, just to, I guess I should have said at the outset, this site is a little bit complicated from a stormwater aspect. There's a ridge that kind of splits the property into the proposed subdivision into two different watersheds. And then with the development, those existing watersheds are changing to what we would call new watersheds. So comparing pre and post is a little more difficult. I think that the, the plan is, is fairly thorough in establishing that. So I think they've, they've hit the mark there. But there is some issue with emergency routing. I didn't see any that was presented either for the northern watershed or we'll call it the southern watershed. And the issue with that is that emergency routing is there to prevent flooding in the big storm, not the design storm, but in the, the, the big storm. We all know that there's bigger storms out there. So I'd like to see, I would recommend that the town requires some emergency routing to, to, to push that floodwater that may show up from the 500 or the thousand-year storm away from the proposed structures. Or to prevent flooding at the water plant, for example. I think there's some easy fixes that can be done there, but that would be up to what, what the town determines. One other item that I noted in the in the drainage report was the existing wetland that's located on the, we'll call it the western side of the property. If I'm reading this correctly, the, the hundred-year storm analysis to that wetland elevation wise is noted to be 743.03 feet. In the post-developed scenario, it's about 16100s higher. So that elevation is increased. Depending on how you look at that, I think the Marshall County's ordinance says you can't increase those elevations. The, the flow to the wetland is, is not increased, but the elevation ends up being less compared, if I'm reading this math correctly. I don't know if someone from, from the developer's engineer can comment on that. Maybe they can clear that up while we're here. But, uh, but those are kind of the highlights. I think with some emergency routing and some questions related to that, we may be able to make a positive recommendation to the town to say, you know, we, we feel comfortable with what's shown. Okay. If there's any specific questions, I can answer, I can do that, or I can attempt, or.
Hydrants, yeah, it's a stores, it's a, you don't have any in town, so I mean, that's, that's minimal. It's my concern, it starts back on main road bars. Fire flow? Fire flow, yeah.
I'm kind of providing a summary. And I read through the report that you sent that enumerated some of the, some of the recommendations in terms of sanitary, which none of were glaring, but most of what you're suggesting on sanitary is something that's going to make almost an easier process or required process for the IDEM approval. So going to, so, okay. But what I'm hearing you say is it is a sound design. You were happy with the majority of it.
I, I would feel that it's functional.
Okay, that, yeah, I'm sorry, happy is a weird expression there. Functional would be much better. In review of the water. Burke, you want to comment on the additional comment that was added to the 10-inch tap? Was it a miscommunication? Or did you think that was something that was required from the town?
What I'm gonna do is a structured slide to the side and have the engineers.
There you go. That's what I figured you were, but.
Answer the question, and this is on the, the water supply, not storm water, right?
That's correct. Yeah, transition out.
On water supply, the answer that eight to 10 inch tap.
And Tom Hardy with Chalkup and Associates. Over the years, CMD developing all these sites, they just, you know, found out bigger is better as far as the water goes. It, it helps the pressure, it helps volumes. And they felt the 10-inch would help supply a little bit more pressure and a little bit more volume. But whether we actually need it or not, we don't know yet. We didn't run a lot of calculations. And their goal is to get as much as they can, and 10-inch would do that.
Well, there's got to be some calculations because at one time you were going to go off that six. And you switched to the 10, but the six wasn't enough. So there's got to be something existing. The existing six-inch main that we put down South Main, you're going to tee off that over by the senior apartments?
Oh.
And you guys determined it wasn't. It was under, you guys determined it was too small?
Oh, yeah, we knew the six could be too small. And the eight may be adequate, but the 10-inch would be a safety force.
Do you have calculations to say that the eight will be enough?
No.
Can we get those?
I hope so. I've been working with Aaron Odd, the other engineer that certified the water. And he's trying to find somebody that those counts have been fifteen years since he done, and he doesn't have the software for it. So we're still looking for somebody to do those calc.
I think those calculations will provide us better data, but what, I think, and Bob, you can speak towards this better than I can, but we're worried about pulling it off and what's this going to do on a, on a town level? Right? What, what, what's going to happen to water pressure down the line if we get that calculation? Is that correct?
If you need an eight, let's use an eight instead of a 10, so the other.
Right, we don't want to oversize randomly or undersize, leaving the, the development undersized. What we want is the correct size based upon calculations.
Okay. Well, I don't know if I can find anybody yet.
And I think the question on a six and up versus eight or 10, probably not necessarily running a calculation, but historical knowledge, so Alan and the team know from distance and number, they said six isn't going to be enough. I don't have to run the math. I know that's not enough, so. I don't know that there was an actual calculation though, but I can agree that.
Figured out the right answer when we're dealing with the entire town.
Yeah, right, yeah. But I got everybody. That's why I say knowing the answer is better than.
It is. And we have to kind of insist on, not kind of, we have to insist on that. We have to have the data to back the.
Aaron, for those who don't know, Aaron Odd is the city engineer for Warsaw. So he does that stuff. I think he has the program. The difficulty is he can't use Warsaw's government program for his personal, yeah, so. And to try and find a private company to be able to do that for, for him is something he's working through to try and get that done. So it's not an issue of knowledge, it's an issue of access to that system. So we work with Aaron on projects we have in Warsaw, so we have a relationship with him there. So I'll reach out to him too and kind of push on. I've been in touch with him in terms of spec manuals and those types of things that we have to have for bidding. So we're well, we're in communication on the product, so I'll push on him some more to try and get. I even asked our in-house engineer if there was a way to get a system so that we could do that in-house. And he hadn't necessarily been all that successful, being able to track something down. So we'll go through it and we'll figure something out to be able to get that answer in, because I can kind of agree with that. And then we'll know. And then I can think that would pull that liability statement off of the plans to say, if eight's enough, then there's no reason for any liability question. If it's 10, and it's 10, you know, from the developer's standpoint, eight-inch pipe is cheaper than 10-inch pipe. So.
Sure.
There's something.
Yeah, we're going to insist on that liability statement, hold off the plan, based upon that thing. Yeah.
So that answer, oh, either way, no, no pipe has to be in that.
Absolutely.
One question I had was in terms of the design, I know a big question was capacity. So when you say it's functional, does it mean that the, the wastewater has the capacity to be able to handle all of the development without concern?
I did not. Well, that, again, I haven't seen calculations based upon what the proposed flow would be or demand on the system. I simply looked at it from a well at flow from point A to point B. Capacity wise, again, that would be up to you guys. And I haven't seen those calculations. I've seen, hey, this is what we expect. But there's been no, hey, we've got, you know, 400,000 gallons a day peak, and the pipe will carry this. I haven't seen a typical design calc. The only calculations I've seen is drawdown testing on the lift station that is downstream this will run into. And it appears that that is adequate to handle the flow today.
And that's based on the Indiana, the, the IDEM numbers for the units, right? And the, I saw calculations, estimates based upon full occupancy of 300 units going into that lift, going into the waste station. Is that correct? I've remembered seeing those numbers, Tom, okay. And they all calculated to be favorable because I think we calculated with anywhere between 16 and 20% depending on the time of year. July is much different, which we have capacity for in our wastewater, so, okay.
That's good. On the storm questions. So when you talk about the emergency overflow, I guess that's not the term you use, but.
That's actually correct.
So emergency overflow and directional pushing of water, so it doesn't end up in certain spots. Chris, have you talked about, or can you kind of elaborate on?
Yeah, for the, on the detention basin, it's kind of in the inside heel. It's kind of taped, the backwards of it all, that there's an outflow pipe. You know, the, the overflow is kind of over the top of that overflow pipe. I don't think it come out real distinct even on the drawing.
Okay.
For the, for the weir there.
Chris, may we get your, your name and address and who you're with?
Sure, Chris McCray with John Kimpel. Address is 902. Well, 325.
Thank you.
And Chris, do you think, is, is it? You might be able to come to the plans and see here. Is this in the heel, what you're talking about? So this is a, so internal?
Yeah, so right here is the overflow structure.
That's to the west.
To, to, the weir is right here. So this overflow.
Yes, sir.
So we talked about how some of the overflow could, like interior of the site would come here, then go down the road and then come here. And this was going to be the weir overflow right here over top of the pipe. And what we can get, I can get you a roll-up detail, say, I can.
Yeah.
That's the one I'm worried about.
Yeah, I guess.
It goes into that.
Yeah, what I see is, we, yeah, I need to say some more detail on this because I just can't. I can't tell what the contouring is doing right here. This may be adequate, I don't know.
Okay.
Has there been any calculations to, you know, when you and I talked on the phone about the critical storm? And I would agree with the comment you put in the hydraulic summer sheet. Yeah, the SCS. But the critical storm, basically what is great about that is it tells you how much flow, how fast you're going to see at that, at that big storm. And then you can size the width of this weir. That's what the point of it was. It wasn't so much to say, hey, your detention's inadequate. It was, how big does this weir need to be? Because it doesn't need to be 25 feet wide, so 30 feet wide, that kind of.
For the, for the maximum C, CFS, you want to see a detail of, okay, what's going to be flowing through this weir during a hundred-year event? If, if, if this gets clogged. Is that what you're looking for?
Sort of. So, in the hundred-year event, that weir should never come into play. Your detention is sized for the hundred-year event.
Correct.
This is for, yes, if that gets plugged, or we get that storm on Tuesday, storm on Wednesday, storm on Thursday, storm on Friday situation, which we all know happens. Okay? And we're outside the design of what you're, what this is sized to do. Does that make sense? So it's that, it's that emergency time that's outside your design. You know, the, the town can't stand in a position to say you have to capture every storm of all time. Nor can they say you have to catch every storm that's piggybacked on each other. So this is just a method. So yes, in the hundred-year storm that comes and goes, this is adequate, right? That's how you've designed it.
Right.
And I would agree with your calc's with the exception of the 16100s raising elevation from pre to post. But from an outflow standpoint, I think your, your calculations are adequate. But this emergency weir says, okay, in that bigger storm, can we make sure that this will hold it or direct it away from all of this development?
Oh, okay.
You see what I'm saying? That's, that's what that's there for.
Okay.
And ideally also, we do have an issue up here where we know this collects water. Now you're making the situation better here by taking this water and sending it this way. So you're pulling it out of this watershed. However, that bigger storm. What we don't want to do is, if we flood this way and it ends up coming here, we can't flood this area of town. Or if the, a bigger one comes, how does this outlet, so it doesn't go in somewhere else?
That's really the town's, and speaking with Bob and, and the town, that's where we really got to protect our.
Right, yeah, that's make it or break it right there.
Would you elaborate on, I mean, what we're worried about is our well systems there? And having that emergency relief.
Your well system?
Our well.
Our well is right there in the head of that.
On that north side.
Right there where Davis.
Oh, okay. So we've got to be ultra-protective of that. We need a mechanism, emergency mechanism built into, back to the west of that to protect against any type of overflow.
And I think what we had kind of talked about was, this is kind of outside the design of the development to some degree. It's for the benefit of, but also, you know, putting in that overflow valve right here. Chris, we've kind of talked about that. Something that's not on our property, but the, the developer coming and helping to develop this system that flows into the manhole.
I would say, not only to the benefit of, of, but the impetus of. I mean, some of that emergence, that emergency relief is necessary because some of the redesigning of the water system or the drainage system that is being done by the development. It's modifying it, and, and we need to be protective of that. It is a simple mechanism. It is, we've talked about it, we definitely have informally. What we're looking for is something before planning commission. If I'm correct, Bob, we'd like to see it if we can.
There has to be a.
Sorry. And part of this project, there, there hasn't been a hundred-year flood elevation established for this low area. Okay, so that was part of the request, I think the DNR required. So that, that hydraulic report that I sent you was kind of what that was about, was we took this whole area, did some topography of through, but not all through the wetland area. We, we shot some areas, but we also did some topography where, you know, we wouldn't get stuck. And kind of go through and get a good lay of the land of what's kind of in this low area. So we did a good area of what's high and what's low and what volume capacity that we would have. So then from that, I developed shed areas that would flow into the north. I call it the north wetlands or the property north of the development. And then the wetlands on the development. So we did, I did rainfall events that would shed in there, and these soils are kind of sandy. But I, I did it as basically a play or during the spring when things are frozen, you get a hundred-year event. So basically, kind of calculated worst-case scenario, what water would flow into these watersheds or just wetlands. And, and then did that before the development and then after the development, because part, like we were saying, part of this is going to get redirected into this wetland. And same, same scenario, did, did we use the worst-case scenario as far as soils, so that we generate more water runoff to, to generate these volumes. And so we looked at this as a conservative, you know, as possible in order to generate maybe the worst-case scenario for rain event, a hundred-year rain event. And then we come up through the calculations and he and I have a disagreement of, of this far. And, 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 and so this generated a hundred-year rain event would come through the wetlands here as well as fill up the detention basin during that event. And it would not flow into the northern wetlands. Now, could it flow through the soils? Most likely it probably does. But technically, we're, we're, we're helping this northern wetlands by taking that water into this wetlands. Okay? So as, as far as putting this drain or overflow kind of situation, is that a good safety valve? Yes, I think in any case, that would be a good safety valve. But a lot of these soils is sandy and through the soil borings.
That was my next question. Have you had a board?
Well, there were a lot of soil borings done. And all but three, when they're done, come up dry. So the water is dissipating away. I mean, I think in the report, I kind of stated in there which ones, and, and one of them was over here. I think one or two were over here kind of close to the lower, but the rest of these all come up dry. So obviously the water's filtrating through the ground because of sand and finding whatever way it does either to these wet, wetlands or down to the lake. You know, there, is, is there an underground shelf somewhere? Probably. Do we know where it is? You know, no, no, but since you don't know where that is, is it a good idea to put this in as an emergency overflow if you get rain after rain? Yes, I think that would be a safety valve for anybody that's interested.
As a, as a wholly detached piece of infrastructure from the storm within the development, could we do a separate site plan and analysis for that function? Because it's, it's kind of like technically not within the development plan, right? So it's not connected to the storm and it's not on our property, really. So my thought is like in conjunction with, you know, kind of say, put this on there, but make it, you know, as a separate design plan so that it shows what it is, where it is, who, on whose property it's going to go. And to some degree, does that make sense?
It, to, to me, I mean, this is, this is protecting people's interests, the interest of the developer and the, and the interest of the town, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So if, if, let's say, it might be speaking out of turn here, but let's say the developer puts this in. Now, can, can the town secure either the easements or whatever and the maintenance of this if this is to be done, would be the question.
Well, the maintenance of it will automatically go to the town, correct?
The maintenance of nothing to do.
Yeah.
If you put it in a road, we already had the right. Okay, easement down that one piece.
And we have the easement in the back of the.
We own the property.
We own the property, so really it's just a design issue at this point of, of putting it into the plans.
It's a couple hundred feet of pile.
Yeah.
I think it could be an addendum, an addendum to this place. Traditionally, we would include in a plan, development on someone else's.
And that's fine if it comes in the form of an addendum. What I'd like to see is to have it in, in drawing for the planning commission, is what I'm saying.
Right.
And it's. And it's just something that we're. We've talked about and, and, and we know we're being hypersensitive, but it's, it's in the best interest, as you said, of both parties involved.
Yeah.
I think it's responsible and it's, it's showing due diligence. So if we could design something like that and it's cost-effective, let's get it in front of the planning.
Yeah, and without that, on the, the planning commission could move forward without. That information being documented, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and I, that's good to know. What I would say to the planning is, well, it'll be attached to, but not necessarily. On this storm plan will have the same calculations, but for that one branch. Just because of those reasons that it's technically not on our property, not attached to the, the storm sewer for.
You own the property and joining that, so you could.
Yeah, I mean, right.
Scott, do you have any comment on that?
I don't, I guess I don't understand how this piece of storm pipe is any different than the sanitary sewer or the water main that's on Main Street.
That's running down the easement down main. I was thinking.
I mean.
It's very similar in the sense.
I think it's, it's tied in because if we weren't talking about this development. We wouldn't be talking about putting a pipe in. So in my mind, I, I don't. See how it's, just because it's not connected to the network. How it's any different.
It's not to the benefit of, but because of.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean. I guess I'm not following.
Yeah.
An addendum piece when it's, we're talking, and, and I, my envisionment is not. That it comes up, the pipe doesn't come up to here. The way this is graded, this may blow back to this corner. And then there's a culvert set in this corner.
Two structures that you're pointing at now flow towards the well. So that needs to go all the way to the center.
Yeah.
Of that right there.
There's a, there's a storm sewer right here on. So just, it, it's, it's just here. It's not way back up into here, it's just right here.
Yeah, that could absolutely be on there. What I was thinking was, they wanted it on a separate parcel.
No, I don't think so.
So right down here in this low land.
Yeah.
You know where our water plant is, right?
Yeah.
If you go behind it.
Yep.
Right there. Well, that's not this corner, though.
Well, it's.
It's right there, yeah. Yeah, yeah. You're talking about what? Maybe back to the, you're running a lateral, yeah.
Yeah, so if you ran onto this parcel over.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. I mean, we can put it on there for true.
That elevation is set though, so that normal. You know, you've got an elevation for that post-developed. Um, area. That elevation can be set. At that or just above, so it never really takes water.
Hopefully it's taken forever.
Right, but it's just there as a stopgap. If, if in the event. That you get the bigger one, it, it gives it an outlet. Because right now, there's really no outlet for that northern area. It's just got to keep collecting until it goes somewhere you don't.
I get calls from the several parcels north of the water plant every summer about it's getting real close to my land, so I, I know it's going to happen.
Yeah, a- and, and to me, like. Well, hopefully we did topography, but, well, I don't. And, you know, we have some water elevations that were shot here, you know, at a kind of. Medium, medium water level. I, I don't think we want to go any lower than a certain or any higher. In other words, we want to try to keep a stable. To sustain whatever life needs it to be at a certain elevation.
Yeah, I don't want to drain it. I just want to make sure it doesn't.
Right.
Just to be that, that stopgap for that.
Yeah.
The hot water, because you are going to make. Let's be honest, no matter what you do, as soon as you put something in and you develop, the patterns are going to change. I mean, best intentions, and that's what we're trying to do here, but you want to make sure that you're, like you said, you don't want to drain it. But at the same time, you don't want to flood it either.
Exactly, stabilize.
Couple structures and pipe, it's easy, it really is. Uh, yeah, I don't see a reason not to, you know, to object to that at all. My only question was on what land was it located? But seeing that now makes perfect sense to be able to put it in like that, and we can. I'd want to see it on another plant, so that she, yeah, fall on the floor. Right, yeah, I think to get it on there and add it in and get those calculations as part of the final submission, um. And then also check on that sixteen hundreds, you know, see if we can figure that out, make sure that that. You know, passes the muster, um.
And, and it might have been that I just, that I'm not following the report.
Okay.
But, you know, I was trying to do it and I was like, okay, here's where we're at, and with the changing of watersheds, it, it gets a little bit. Confusing. Yeah, so, um. I will say also on this storm pipe we're talking about on this northeast corner, that is within. Um. Wellhead protection areas, so it'll ha- it'll have to be a pressure rated pipe, so it can't just be an S D R thirty-five, it'll have to be like S D R twenty-one or. Something that is pressure rated, so.
Okay.
Engineer, no doubt.
You know.
Burke is nodding your head, that's what I'm learning. I look.
Look at Scott and Bob and I, yeah, okay.
Well, I want it part of the project. I don't want to see a.
Yeah.
A separate.
Uh huh. So it's for my purposes, and maybe the audience-wise, what, what we've gone over. The town perspective in terms of what you presented today is, and our recommendation from Scott. I A C three twenty-seven, the manhole shift is something that's going to have to happen. It's in your best interest to get through I D M. You have Scott's. Sanitary report with some of the things he didn't enumerate. They're, they are. Some, but mainly minor shifts and changes, and it's in, as he states in the report, it's in your best interest for I D M.
Yeah.
In a smooth process, so it's something that we expect that you'll change.
It'll lower your comments.
It will, and I expect, you know, expect when you guys come to planning, those will be incorporated into changes, if you would please. The, in terms of water, what we're hearing is we would like the calculations and we want some numbers based upon. Eight or ten, we know, you, history tells you six, fine, is out of the question, but we want to see eight or ten. And we want calculations that back that and can justify the uses of it, because we have concerns for the overall town pressure. The other thing we'd like you to do is to remove that comment, which will, will happen. Um, the stores connections not necessary on the fire hydrants. And that's, that's an easy fix. Uh, storm, we've gone over, but we do want to see drawings for that emergency relief, um. You're going to look at the elevation, uh, and see where that problem's coming from.
I'm stopping, and, and, and the stores connections, is that not an issue?
Yeah, according to Bob, not an issue.
That'd be the only hydrant the town has.
Um. So we want, we would like to see a design on that emergency relief on the north side. And of course.
Too, we'll get to Scott, the. Closer blown-up view of that.
Of the.
The weir.
Of the weir on the west side, yeah, please.
So, a couple of other things I noted, so we do or do not have the calcs for demand on the water treatment, including peak usage, peak times?
Okay.
I don't know, do we have that?
Development of demand has been completed. Um, verification of pipe size has not. At least that I have seen. That's on the eight to ten is what we're talking about on the sanitaries.
Sanitary. Bob, do you got anything on that?
That's an addition.
Sounds pretty important to me.
Yeah.
Sounds really important.
Yep.
Want water going both ways.
Yeah, based on state. So do we need to add anything on that for the capacity, is that what you're talking about on the sewer that you want to see from us?
Bob.
Or. Sewer, is your math got to be cleaned up for those? Manhole distances for your elevation?
Elevation. That's something that's in the recommendation and the report then.
I, I can explain to you what I mean.
Yeah.
Essentially, when you look at your inverted elevation from structure to structure, and then you look at length and slope. The math has to be there, or I D M historically has ticked it back and said, these, this math doesn't add up. And this is for the N D P E S permit? No, this would be for your.
I D M.
Instruction applicant.
Which had happened before permitting.
I ran them yesterday and they, they weren't, um, the, let me find the exact comment.
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
They did match, I'm playing the pro, they did match from playing the profile, which was an issue in February, so those matched up. Um.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Confirm elevations with slope and length of proposed sanitary piping, calculations and elevations. Using proposed lengths and slopes are not consistent in all locations was the comment. As opposed to listing all of them, it was just kind of a check. Um, I did check back the. The elevations that are listed in plan do match what's in profile, but when you do the math out, you're, the. It's close, but it's off a little bit from what's published on there and. Something is adequate, but the. I'm trying to alleviate the I D M comment. I, I had another note. What was all needed for the, uh, I D M than the N D P E S permit? Is there anything else for that? Is that, do we have, or developer have everything in place? Leave on P D E S permit implications.
It's just a sanitary extension.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Chester, did you have a question?
Yeah, finally got into the. System here. I've got a couple of questions. You probably already covered them, but just wondering, with the full capacity of. Of, of, uh, the project. Will the water pressure be enough, uh, to sustain fire protection?
It's a calculation where it's.
So that's another calculation we're waiting on? Is that what I hear?
Oh.
Water capacity, sustained fire protection?
Yeah. And, uh, and of course, to provide. Water pressure for the town, you know, on a normal basis.
That one was covered.
It's covered, okay. And, uh. The, uh, the runoff from the project, I couldn't hear too well, the, uh. Uh, will that affect? The quality of water coming out of our well system, which is right next door?
Covered. That was, that was discussed.
I must have missed that.
We discussed it, Chester, while we were discussing the emergency runoff. Uh, system that we're going to put into play up there.
All right.
But thank you for the question.
So it's good, huh?
We're going to make it better, yes. Yeah.
It's this question about water quality or water quality.
Well, water quality and that stems around from preserving, protecting the well, I think. Don't get Scott, I mean. In essence.
Is the question rooted in? Will this stormwater runoff impact what's coming in through the well that you're then putting in your distribution system, or is it? What's the runoff water quality? There's two, there's two different questions there.
Considered.
One is. Well, how does it impact the potable water system, or how does it affect, you know, runoff going to wherever it's going to go? From a surface type of situation, so that clarification on the question might be warranted.
Okay, you want to. Chester?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, just a clarification on that last question about the water quality. Could you be specific on what you're asking there?
Well, the runoff from the, from the project, since there's going to be, uh, streets and sewers and. Everything, uh, will that be running down to our well system? Which is right next door, you know, lower area. Well, how, how will that affect the, uh, the, the quality, safety quality of the water?
Shouldn't, it's treated before sent out, so it should be fine, but. I'd like Scott to add to that, but.
I'll, I'll defer to anyway, to Chris on this one.
Well, it depends on, okay, elevation on your, or your well it is, right, or. Or we're going to set this overflow pipe so that the water doesn't. Reach. That, depending on how your well was set and how it was sealed. You know.
I can get that information for you with the elevation of.
Okay.
The floor is to. It's in the plant, so it's. If it gets in the back door, it's going in there, so.
Right, and that's why we're talking about the relief system, that's right. We're, we're putting in all mechanisms to make sure that that water doesn't get high enough to get up in that head.
No.
But.
Will it affect your aquifer? Well, I'm not sure where your aquifer is fed from. You know, I'll end up in, I D M would have that information or not.
It flows from the northwest is where aquifer comes from.
Okay, so it's coming in.
This way from the.
Your south. It's coming in from back over towards Jefferson, that area and that north. So.
But if, if we don't affect water fitting up around the well to possibly seep down the well. You know, that would be our concern.
Okay. Question.
One other question on this is. As far as bringing this for planning, I think we've got enough time to make the changes to your map and. Get the information.
Hopefully that happens before the, uh, thing session. Okay, we're sitting on Tuesday.
We're sitting next Tuesday for a work session. You're setting nineteenth of March for the planning, six thirty, so.
I'd like to see it before.
I would like to see it during work session ideally, and that, a little caveat to this is that in order to send it to I D M on the sanitary stuff.
Right.
Mr. Porter needs to sign off on it, so the sooner that you get that.
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up and ready to go, the sooner he puts his John Hancock on it, they even send it down to the state. So, again, for efficiency sake, it's a good idea maybe to prioritize that sanitary and get the signature on it.
And I think that, um, for us, probably the longest, the, the. Most difficult portion of this is probably those calculations because of the programming issues. So I'll get with Aaron, you know, right after this, but I think these guys can run through all those other requests pretty quickly. And get that stuff on there, but making sure that we can run those calculations on the eight to ten. Um. Number, and I guess the town, the, the town wants to know the number. They're not necessarily only concerned about the liability. Question. Okay, because it's, I mean, if, if my client said, look, it's fine, take the liability thing off and just use eight.
Yeah, we like to know what it's based on. We don't want it just to be a feeling or a historical thing. We want the actual calculation.
Yeah.
We don't want to leave the people in the new housing development undersized, and we do not want to oversize it and then have a depletion out on town.
Yeah.
We want right size.
It's energy heavy there for the work session.
Yeah.
For the planning as well, so.
Agreed.
And I know you were talking about having trouble getting to wherever you can get those calculations, and that was for time-wise. Is that going to?
Well, as you know, there's, uh, uh, time, uh, being short, that often gets things done, so. But maybe that's a little motivation.
Let a professor compare us to a rat in a corner, usually finds the cheese faster. Appreciate that thought, Burke, um.
So we'll make sure that that gets to the engineers and everybody that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a problem for next week, uh, it's a problem for this week, so.
I, I have a question also. Is this going to create, or is there any potential to create any additional? Flooding or water issues to the property directly to the west? To the west.
So you looked at.
There's a field between this development and, and seventeen.
Right, owned by the cabinet, that strip back there, it's, sits behind west of the wetlands there, Steve, is what you're talking about.
Yes.
Pardon?
I don't have the topo with me, but.
There's, there's a.
I think it.
Ridge that runs.
There is, it's going to shift to the south, yeah. That's going to move southward, but yeah, it's, I don't think.
I guess we want to make sure we're protecting all the neighbors as well.
Yeah.
So that, based upon the topography, we're thinking we get more of their water than our water goes to them. Is that right?
Yeah, we, we don't have, but like a very small section on the west side. That might be ten or fifteen feet wide, that might. Blow a little bit out on the backside of that houses. So it's all going to be grass anyway that's flowing that way. You, you might have a little bit increase in shed from the roofs of the houses, but. Very, very little.
Aren't you capturing some of that too in that shed, going back?
Yeah, we're.
Yeah.
Some of that's getting redirected back.
Exactly.
That's north, yeah.
Okay, so that we would think post-it on with those, there's main. Okay, so that we would think post development, there's, there's may still be water runoff there, but no more than is pre-development. It may be less than pre-development.
I have one more question. Right now, just because a lot of the food input I've had far as, has there ever been anything looked at as far as access from seventeen to this project? I mean, we look at traffic flow increasing tremendously on Maine, Ohio. Definitely, and I know we've only got two ways in, and that's from the mountain.
Right, yeah, I mean, in terms of, there's never been a discussion with the company that owns that other, you know, the company that owns the lot to the west, uh, to make straight access out to seventeen. We have kind of been considering something like that. We're concerned more that you would be drawing non-residential traffic into the development, which would increase speeds and increase other concerns inside the development. We've never, my clients never completed a project where you had pass-through traffic um, like that. I think there's, there's a lot of negatives to something like that for the residents of the development. Um, I think that the traffic study that we saw had less of an effect of traffic on Main Street than maybe in, you intuitively would think. But I haven't seen necessarily that, uh, exact number come out, but it was very minimal. Uh, at every development, we have a raised concern about the traffic and how much traffic it's gonna generate, and that never comes to fruition. That is exactly what we had at Centennial. They said, oh, this traffic's gonna be terrible. You can drive out there and you know, hardly, I mean, at eight fifteen in the morning, they pass on maybe seven thirty, but for the most part, there's no traffic jam, there's no light, there's no, every, what, everything flows fine.
How many homes are in Centennial? How many, how many?
Two hundred and seventy-five units, I think, right around there, so two hundred and seventy, two seventy-five.
What are the things?
You've got access to thirty-one active from that, both ways from town and from thirty-one.
Well, they have to come through the, yeah, so they would have to, they would have to turn left out on the thirty-one south.
Right.
Um, and then also to come the other way. What I was saying is at the intersection of the developments that leads from the development to the towns roads, uh, we don't see a bunch of traffic or anything. There's contemplation, uh, actually, uh, Sean's here, he was the town attorney at the time, and that there was contemplation of putting in a street light at the entrance just based upon congestion, and that's not need, been brought up again.
I know with two accesses anyway, I mean, I know you still see part of the traffic coming in, which doesn't really intend anything for the traffic goes coming off thirty-one, and you're gonna have naturally coming from Centennial into town for whatever. But you don't have both combined. Otherwise, somebody just coming in, everybody coming in, whether it be coming from Walmart or it's cool.
Yeah.
Just in Canyon, you know, you don't, everybody, you come right there to wait for whatever is coming out, but you're coming naturally out of your CDF.
So on the, on the side of connecting directly to seventeen, ownership, the cost of, uh, purchasing land, oh, you know, not owning the lands, it, it wasn't really thought of as part of the development and, and thinking of it afterwards and after designing, the negatives were a real concern in trying to put something like that in. Is it in phase two of the development or phase three and four of the residential development portions? Is it possible to put that in on that south road? It is possible. It seems highly unlikely, um, you know, but not from the standpoint of you lose a unit or two, but from the standpoint of concern of traffic coming through there, um, you know, it's a residential development, people just using it as a means to get to seventeen. Uh, that's not what the road widths are designed for, it's not what the design of the development is for, it's, so it seems to be, while it seems logical that you could do that, but there's a lot of negatives to trying to do something like that, too.
What negative is on their fault, and we just kept better. I don't like putting the town in this, look, not just the development.
I think there's a lot of benefits to the town.
There, there is, and the one thing that we've discussed and, and, and we've ongoing discussion with phase three and four is that one of the things that may come made clear and a lot of the traffic studies are, the problem with this is their estimates. And unlike other estimates, what we don't have is a defined client base yet that's living out there. We're, we're, we're still trying to determine how many full-time and what the traffic's gonna look like. So ongoing studies, estimates are great, but the ongoing studies I think are gonna be necessary to address that question. And then that's gonna provide us the data to make decisions for the town and request that maybe down the line, but. Absolutely, so when we get phase one and two, and we're gonna have a base out there to be able to do actual traffic studies on and pick up actual traffic flow during the different months. Again, I need to look at July too, so we need them online for a full year of traffic pattern, right? So do we build a road for one year, one month of worth of traffic, or do we have a five-month, you know, traffic new additional issue? So we need to determine the volume based upon the development is what I'm saying. And, and, but that's something we have to keep in mind and keep moving forward with.
Yeah, it was an open question, not just.
Yeah.
It's something that I would like to give a number for as well.
Yeah, and usually, I mean, we're, we're upon looking at the, I mean, we're happy to see the numbers too, and because we've always seen a positive response to development from that, uh, but in terms of, there's a lot of hurdles in putting in a road across someone else's property.
You have any sense of the wetland that's out there as well, so, all right.
So are there any more water questions coming in or going out right now? But I, I'd, I have a question, maybe generate some more. So the structures within, within this, um, development, I recall distance between the structures is sixteen feet, or is that just between the houses, or what's the distance between multifamily structures?
They sometimes vary. I don't think there's any that's less than eighteen feet between foundations. So if we look some twenty, twenty.
Till sixteen, sixteen feet.
Eight to no twenty-three, nineteen.
Because the eaves go by the eaves on foundation, yeah.
So twenty, in the areas where it's eighteen, you know, between the eaves would be sixteen.
Right.
Uh, but it's
That's gonna be in the narrowest sense, sixteen between.
I'm looking, yeah. Yeah.
Just want to confirm that, so we do have access, we need something for utilities?
We're good there?
Yeah, I didn't see anything less than sixteen.
Yeah, there's some that are here in these corners in like seventeen, that's between garages. As far as between the houses? That's more of a Steve question, I mean.
No, I just want to make sure you, I'm okay with that, for my perspective, I just want to make sure.
There's one skinny section through there, the even won't be less than twenty.
No, he's a bit.
It's skinnier in that one corner.
We talked about that.
We talked about it, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So yeah, and then for reference, I mean, eighteen feet is between a lot of the single or the, you know, the condominiums. Eighteen feet is, uh, add a little bit more than, uh, Maple Ridge. So the, as far as, yeah, you know, units and
Too, but yeah.
I had one more note then.
Yeah.
Having talked to an employee of the post office, some of the street names could be a problem.
Yeah.
And it's ultimately, since our ordinance and statute says that the plant commission can, is responsible for naming the streets, uh, we have to leave that also, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure when you have Fox employee told me was Sandy Harbor, Sandy Park, Sandy Pine, those could be a little bit of a nightmare for the post office.
Yeah.
When they deliver mail and have an addresses.
Yeah. So from, from the breakout of the Sandy.
Yeah, if there's a way to get some better names, I'm sure if they were proposed.
Thought maybe Bean Boulevard, Porter Parkway.
Again, again, trying to, trying to consider all parties on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you like the honor of glory, Redson, so those are. All right.
I have a question for a town attorney. With the technical review committee, can we, we have choices to approve moving this forward or advising the plant commission on this? Uh, favorably, unfavorably, or not taking any actions, is that correct, our choices? Can we approve with conditions as a TRC? I know, like, the plan commission can do that, can the TRC do that?
I think so. I mean, ultimately, it's the plan commission that takes action and you're just like the technical.
We're, we're advisory.
Yeah, it's just sending comments along to them, I think is fine, yeah.
Okay.
Any concerns, people working?
Asking Culver Equities parties that are representative here today, are there any questions or clarification needed for the town's position that's been enumerated over the course of this meeting?
No, what I understood is, uh, the list that Mr. Gorsky ran down, if we can get all or um, all of those settled by next Tuesday for your workshop. Uh, we'll do our best to get that done within our ability, so.
Can we, can we spell those, that list out one more time, so we have it on the record?
How about you tell me what you heard?
Yeah, um, what I heard is adjusting some of the manhole, uh, colors to, you know, impair with Scott's suggestions. Implement the suggestions from Scott on his list, the numbers for the eight to ten inch pipe, uh, remove the liability, um, clause. Remove the storage capacity deals on the hydrants, um, add overflow in the northeast corner. Um, show the blow up of our weir's, uh, process for Scott to review. Um, and get fire hydrant water pressure numbers, uh, to verify that we have pressure for the, for the fire hydrants. Um, one of those is kind of a blanket, employ the suggestions from Scott in that analysis that he provided. Yeah.
Yeah.
The calculation that you needed.
What?
So that was kind of a blanket cover of, of the things from Scott, so that's what I understand we need to get done before that workshop next Tuesday.
Anything missing?
No.
I think that's it.
Oh, that was, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have no further questions regarding the site plan review.
Was there an analysis, I did, was there an analysis that you sent to the town that has not been sent to us, yeah, as I understood at the beginning? For their permission to release?
Yeah.
So that's kind of the one that I'm thinking will have the
I can, with their permission, I'll
Yes, please, thank you.
That would, because that's kind of the list I'm gonna be looking at to make sure that.
Correct. I have issued as sanitary, I have not issued a water or a storm uh, formal recommendation.
Okay, but, and we have some of those others covered without that, so. But we need that map cleaned up, the
Yeah.
The four hundred feet, the mantles need to be less than four hundred feet, you gotta make your elevation on the plan.
Which are part of that, that recommendation.
Yeah, and then I'll sign the sanitary, sir.
There you go. I'll make a motion with the conditional approval of the TRC recommendation with the suggested, uh, changes uh, prior to the planning commission or, or bringing into the work session. Thank you, work session, uh, next Tuesday, which would be, anybody got a date on?
Well.
Thank you, sir, three twelve, um, I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve
Conditionally.
Conditionally for us to give a favorable recommendation to the plan commission for case twenty twenty-four P dash zero for all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries to favorably approve to the plan commission with the conditions listed.
Well, the conditions are out there, so we understand what we need to do to move forward. From the town, from the town. Yep. It makes it real.
Other business for the TRC. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting's closed.
Thank you, sir.